Thank you, everyone. Welcome to the Talbot County Council Meeting. Thank you, everyone. Welcome to the Talbot County Council Meeting. It is April the 14th. We are at our remote location here at the Community Center at the Wyeth Oprah. Due to COVID-19 pandemic, there will be no public access to the Wyeth Oprah. Citizens who wish to listen to the County Council meeting can do so by dialing 415-655-0002 and enter the access code, which is 475-626-605. For any persons who wish to participate or listen in, not participate but listen in, to these County Council meetings and going forward while we're in a state of emergency, can do so by dialing into that number and also entering the access code. These meetings are live streamed as well. You can access them via YouTube and you can access via www.youtube.com/midshorecommunitytelevision. So the access via live stream is www.youtube.com/midshorecommunitytelevision. I have one other announcement. The Lakeside Development Meeting is not a part of this agenda. It was printed in error in the Star Democrat today. We have received some calls on it. That project has not been heard before the Public Works Advisory Board nor the Planning Commission. The Council has not received a recommendation from either of those commissions on the Lakeside Development. It is not a part of this agenda nor will the Council hear it until those two bodies have heard and discussed it. Also, I want to give the following instructions to members listening, to citizens listening. The County Council will be holding two remote public hearings on the fiscal 2021 budget. That's Bill 1445, on Tuesday, May the 5th, at 2:00 p.m. and at 5:00 p.m. It will be held here at the Wyeth Oprah at the Talbot County Community Center. Again, the building is not accessible to the public due to the ongoing COVID-19 epidemic. You are encouraged to submit in writing any comments to Bill 1445. I will read this again at the end of the meeting, but I want to make light of it now. You are encouraged to submit any comments on the budget, that's Bill 1445, in writing, and do so to publiccomment@talbotcountymd.gov. You must receive those comments in by May 5th. Again, you want to send any comments on the budget?
May 4th.
I'm sorry, May 4th. Any comments on the budget to publiccomment@talbotcountymd.gov. You must receive those by Monday, May the 4th for those comments to be part of our official record. If you have any questions regarding that process, please contact the County Manager's Office at 410-770-810 and leave comment or have your questions answered at that time. Those are my opening comments. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Leshaw to lead us in a word of prayer of all councilmembers put in mind standing at this time. Hallelujah. Pledge allegiance.
Healing God, we ask for your mercy in this time of trouble with many in our society afflicted with COVID-19 or living with worry, isolated to prevent the further spread of this illness, or called to serve in medicine, government, or other essential business. Use us as your instruments to heal the sick, comfort the lonely, and feed the hungry. We give you thanks for the many in this community who have responded so well, abiding by best practices in social distancing and cleansing, feeding our schoolchildren when they can't be fed at school, learning to teach when they can't be in the same room with their students, staffing our medical centers, remaining vigilant as first responders, and providing all the other essential services while most of the rest of us are confined to our homes. Give us grateful hearts for those who are serving us so faithfully and bring us through this public health crisis safely. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Leshaw, for that heartfelt prayer. And we all certainly join in with your sentiments as we go through these difficult times. Counsel, you do have before you an agenda that is printed. The Chair asks, are there any additions or deletions or corrections to the agenda at this time?
Yes. Mr. Pack, I would like to have the Council consider removing the recommendations of the Property Tax Committee this evening. I know that it seems very insensitive right now to talk about putting something on the ballot that would raise people's taxes in a time that's so difficult when so many have lost their jobs and small businesses are suffering. I would rather put it off until we introduce our budget tonight, which I think people will hopefully like some of the things that are in the budget and let people focus on that and would give us a chance to get some feedback how people are feeling. And I'd also think that maybe three more weeks and we're going to know whether or not some of these orders of staying at home are going to be lifted and whether or not the economy is going to be able to start bouncing back in a few weeks or if this is going to be a long-term affair. For me, that will very much determine what I'm willing to ask the people to vote for on the ballot and we're trying to decide whether, you know, which of the options is best. And I, for one, just really have no idea which option is best and I don't feel prepared to be able to discuss that this evening. And I believe, you know, we have time. We happen to be in the May. So my proposal is to do this at the first council meeting in May to have this discussion. And I feel like we're going to have a lot more information. So I would ask Council to consider delaying that conversation.
Okay. So that's a motion to remove item number five from the agenda. Again, the Tax Referendum Committee has done their work on this. I know there is somewhat time sensitive as far as questions that have to go back up to the state that will appear on the ballot. So we have to be sensitive to that as well. We can delay and delay and delay because then we run the risk of not having enough time to get the question vetted by the Office of Law. Not only that, the referendum committee was going to try to do their due diligence to go out and educate the consumer and the citizens on the ballot question once it was drafted. I know right now it's difficult for us to do a lot of things because of the stay-at-home order. You can reach out to some people via Facebook or a conference call or Zoom or any other platform that are out there for you to use. Certainly wasn't the way we intended this to happen. We were looking at for more of a town hall type of a setting where Sheriff Gammel could go in front of a certain group, Commissioner Stanton could go in front of a certain group, and Superintendent Kelly Griffithson could go in front of a certain group and discuss the ballot question more personally, more of one-to-one.
I think we still have May and June and part of July to do that. So they said that as long as we introduce by May 26th, my proposal is in '12 to introduce which uses time to hold public hearings. And as far as getting education out, nobody's going to be listening to that right now. I think we need, you know, to try to go out and educate on a ballot question to raise taxes right now, nobody's going to be listening because right now they're just, they're inside or struggling to feed their families and hope that they get a job or collect unemployment. So I don't think we'll be losing any time by delaying this just a few weeks when people are, maybe we'll feel better and more open to be educated about it. I think we've done a lot in conversations amongst us. I think the awareness is sitting out there, but to go and kind of hit people over the heads with it right now, it just feels really insensitive.
I don't think you're hitting people over the heads with it. I think what the committee was asking us to do today was to kind of pull from their recommendations what this council wanted to bring back.
I wouldn't vote for anything this evening, so I just want more information, which is exactly why we're introducing the budget the way we are, just doing something flat and making those decisions in several months. So I don't think we're losing anything by waiting until the first meeting.
I can support Mrs. Price's request here. We've heard the Governor say that he's freezing spending. Looking at property tax increases or doing anything like this is not something that I even want to focus on at this time. I think more, and I always wanted to say that I complain about how slow the government moves, but I think in this situation, three weeks is going to tell us a lot of information and will really show us just how depressed the economy is here in Talbot County and what we may need to do or what areas or pockets we need to focus on to help out. So at this time, I'm in favor of pushing that down one more month just to see where we are. So if you made a motion on second.
I mean, I didn't, but yes, I made the motion.
Any further discussion on the removal of item number five from the agenda?
Have we researched this? Are we confident that if we push this back a full four weeks to May 12th that we still have a reasonable timetable to get this out to the state and back that it will get through all the process that we need in order to make it in timely fashion onto the November ballot?
I believe just introducing by May 26th.
I don't know how to answer that question. I mean, you push it back and I have a comment in front of me. What does the question need to go up to? Madam Secretary?
I'm sorry. I was looking to Mrs. Lane to see if she recalled that answer. I do not recall that answer.
We believe right now it is May 26th.
For introduction.
For introduction.
And then it has to be up at the state, I believe, by July 30th or 31st.
Yeah, so we have plenty of time.
Obviously, between May 12th and May 26th, there'd be a question of how much time the committee would have to discuss that issue before introduction.
I don't believe it needs to come back to the committee at that point. I believe the committee would come back together as a group once a ballot question is determined by the council and then we would assist the council at their direction on any educational type campaigns.
And that's about where they have to go back to the committee so the committee can figure out how they're going to go out and now and publicize that question and educate.
That's just marketing. It has nothing to do with getting the language to the state.
No, no, that's the committee's work. And being in the times that we're in right now, they're going to have to have more creative means of doing that, as I said before, either Facebook or Zoom. So we're putting more pressure on the committee to do their work.
No, let us hope that by May, we are not going to understand stay-at-homes and they can do it the way that we intended them to do it. But right now, they're not, they're not really reaching out to anybody. Again, I would be very upset if we had done something tonight and the committee started going out and, you know, calling people and marketing this in this time. I just, it's so insensitive to do that. It's just a waste of time to be marketing in the next four weeks so it doesn't lose us any time by introducing on the 12th and 15th tonight.
Can I ask you a question, Mr. Leshaw? I believe we have time.
Look, all five of us back before the election supported this in concept. We have to be able to have the support of all of us, I think, to move this forward. And if we don't have that yet tonight, I think we should amend the agenda and address this when we do have that support.
Okay. I'll have a break, Mr. Leshaw. Okay. So we have a motion, the second amendment, removing item number five from the agenda, bringing it back on. What date? When is it?
12th.
12th, May 12th. Okay. Madam Secretary, where are you? You seem to be on the right. Will we move on item number five from the agenda? Could you please call the roll?
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Mr. DiVillio?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Ms. Bryce?
Aye.
Aye.
We are not in the right order.
Okay. Are there any other additions or deletions or corrections to the agenda at this time? Hearing none. The agenda accepted with unanimous consent. Moving on to item number three. We have minutes from February 25th. It's March the 10th, March the 16th, March the 26th. There was a work session. And also, March the 31st was also a work session. So you have the minutes in those meetings, various meetings and work sessions. Are there any additions or deletions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none to the chair. Move that they be accepted with unanimous consent. Moving on, you have dispersments from March the 17th, March the 24th, March the 31st, April the 7th, and April the 14th. We all had a chance to go through those dispersments and speak to Ms. Lane, our fiscal officer. Are there any additions or deletions or corrections to those dispersments? Hearing none to your move that they be accepted with unanimous consent. Jumping down to introduction of administrative resolution. We have item number six on the agenda. Madam Secretary, would you please read the title of that resolution?
An administrative resolution of Talbot County, Maryland, in support of a conditional loan from the Maryland Department of Commerce from the Maryland Economic Development Assistance Fund to Afina Pharma Solutions, Maryland, LLC, and to confirm a local contribution by Talbot County toward the project.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Did we have Ms. Van Hoosier? This figure there she is. Okay.
No, she can stay here. Cassandra.
We had a some difficulty with my mic.
Again, you can do it.
Okay. Ms. Van Hoosier, good to see you. I don't know whether you can pick me up by another mic. I was trying to make it. Thank you. Hello. Good seeing you.
Hello.
Okay. The floor is yours regarding the resolution. If you could just enlighten the Council a little bit more about what this is about as we go forward.
Yes, sir. I'd be happy to. As I said, it's good to see you. I've been hearing a lot of all of you, like we own Harvard School and what have you. So I'm excited to be with you again.
Cassandra, hold on one second. They told us that we have to be right on top of the mic so they can hear us at home. So you have to spit on it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I'll try not to actually spit. So we're here tonight to discuss a conditional loan grant for Easton's base Afina Pharma Solutions. This company is a bright spot in our business community right now because they are in expansion mode. They're a contract pharmaceutical packaging and manufacturing company located on Industrial Park Drive. They have the liquid and topical division here in Easton and they have another division on the company in Cookville, Tennessee. The incentive that we're talking about here or the grant loan that we're talking about would go to fund an expansion project that will include a $27 million capital expenditure and add approximately 100 employees here in Easton. So we think that this is a great investment in our community. We have a small incentive fund in our economic development department that we set aside about $20,000 each year. And so we've been working on that fund for a number of years. We have money in our budget and we're recommending that you approve this resolution to give this loan grant to Afina Pharma.
And they've been a great part in the community for some time now. So I hope they will look forward to do that this evening. Any questions or comments on Ms. Van Hoosier on the pharmaceutical, on the Afina grant loan? Being that this is an administrative resolution, is this eligible for vote this evening? The Council intends to chair to move this to vote this evening?
I will so move.
Move by Mr. Colahan. Seconded by Mr. Callahan. Any further discussion on moving or matter to vote this evening?
Do we have to introduce it first?
Yeah, she already read it.
Oh, I mean, we don't have to, like, raise hands or anything?
Actually, I'm sorry. You're right. I do apologize, Ms. Lane. I wasn't that ahead of myself. Since we are on, since we are on mic, I'm going to take back your motion just one second and ask for the roll call on introduction of the administrative resolution. I do apologize. Madam Secretary, please call your roll.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Mr. DiVillio?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Ms. Bryce?
Aye. Mr. Leshaw?
Aye.
Now that it's been properly introduced, it is eligible for vote this evening. We did have a motion by Mr. Leshaw to do that, seconded by Mr. Callahan to do that. Any further discussion or movements to vote this evening?
I just want to echo Ms. Van Hoosier's comments on what a bright spot this has been on the business community within Easton and within Talbot County, how they've been, they've come to us, they're adding jobs and they're good jobs. This is really something that we should be encouraging and I am thankful that we have the tools in our tool chest to be able to provide this incentive for them. I'm proud to be sponsoring this and to be voting for it.
Thank you, Mr. Leshaw.
Okay. I'm going to call the vote on moving it to vote this evening. Then, Madam Secretary, we'll call the roll on the actual vote. So this is just a vote to move to vote this evening. Madam Secretary, please call your roll.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Mr. DiVillio?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Ms. Bryce?
Aye.
Mr. Leshaw?
Item number four is for final vote. Is there any further discussion or comment to Ms. Van Hoosier on the resolution?
I'd just like to echo those words. I'm very excited for these positions to get filled here. These are good paying jobs. This is great for the economy here. This is exactly the type of business that we like to have in Span here and I'm glad that they found us and I'm glad that we're able to help them.
Thank you, Mr. DiVillio. It's important to note that they are hiring now. So we hear a lot about layoffs right now, but Afina Pharma is hiring.
That's great. Any further comment?
Thank you for being such an incredible liaison and keeping businesses like that healthy in this county. We really appreciate you and appreciate them as well.
Madam Secretary, on the resolution before council for final vote, would you please call your roll?
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Mr. DiVillio?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Ms. Bryce?
Aye.
Mr. Leshaw?
Aye.
Okay. I think we have a letter somewhere around here for you. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you so much.
Okay. Counsel, now moving on, you have a numbered resolution before you, which is item number seven on the agenda. Madam Secretary, would you please read the title of this resolution?
A resolution to amend Talbot County Resolution 235 and the Talbot County Confensive Grid and Sewer Plan to authorize a single sewer connection and a single equivalent dwelling unit of wastewater treatment capacity to each building and lot of land created pursuant to a pending major lot line revision titled "Major Line Revision of the Lands of McMiles, LLC, in the First Election District, Talbot County, Maryland, Tax Map 24, Grid 24, Parcel 118, Lots 43 through 49, prepared by Lane Engineering, LLC, and dated November 19th, 2019."
Okay. Thank you, all, Mr. Clark. You're smacking on me. Okay, we have Mr. Clark here with us, county engineer. Greg, would you just elaborate a little bit further about this project?
Sure thing. The applicant went before, I guess, the planning commission, or I'm sorry, the planning office to find out if they could subdivide two parcels that they owned. Back in, I guess, November 15th, 2016, Resolution 235 was adopted by the County Council and then subsequently it was approved by the Maryland Department of Environment. In the approval by the Maryland Department of Environment, or MDE, they approved it for 351 EDUs or 351 houses. And they made it kind of clear in their letter back to us that ultimately their approval was both for the map area as well as the number of EDUs. So the resolution you have for tonight is really to, I guess, increase the number of lots that we, in that, as part of Resolution 235, there was a table. And in that table, it listed the two parcels. The property owner now is seeking to go ahead and take those two lots and the owns and make basically a five-lot subdivision. He has two existing lots with two, three additional lots that would be created. To do that, we would need to amend the comp school plan to reflect those three additional lots.
Okay. Any questions on Mr. Clark? By introduction tonight, counsel, this would go back over to the planning commission, first of all, and also the Confensive Board of Sewer Commission to look at whether or not, sorry, Public Works Advisory Board, I got that wrong. And they would send us a recommendation back whether or not to adjust the Confensive Board of Sewer Plan or not if they find it consistent with the comp plan. So by introduction tonight, we only need one member to do so. It would send it over to those committees to look at and they would give us their recommendation back on whether or not it is consistent or not. Any further comment or question? Okay. Madam Secretary, for introduction, could you please call the roll? Introduce.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Mr. DiVillio?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Ms. Bryce?
No.
Mr. Leshaw?
Aye.
Okay. So the matter is introduced. This will be known as Resolution 283. It will be scheduled for a public hearing on May the 26th at 6:30. And hoping that both the planning commission and the Public Works Advisory Board can get this in before that date, we'll have our recommendation back. Thank you, Mr. Clark. Moving on, we now going to move on to item number eight, which is introduction of legislation. And this will be an act to establish a 2020, 2021 Annual Budget incorporation ordinance. And we're going to turn matters over to Ms. Lane, our fiscal officer.
Good evening, counsel. This is the proposed fiscal 2021 general fund budget. We are proposing a budget of $96,550,000. The current fiscal 2020 budget is $92,328,200. This budget, while it is increasing, it is $4.2 million more than the current year budget or 4.57% more. It is significantly lower than the amount of requests. The County Council received requests for operating a capital outlay of over $105 million. That number is $12.8 million more than the current fiscal 20 budget. This budget is increasing by just over $4 million. This is a very unique budget. I think it's representative of this current situation that we're all in right now with an unknown pandemic and the unknown economic consequences of this pandemic long term. So the fiscal 20 budget provides level funding for all county departments and agencies except for state mandated increases for Talbot County Public Schools and the County Debt Service. The County Debt Service is actually on the Talbot County Public Schools facilities. It is increasing because we will have a full year of debt service on the Easton Elementary School Project in fiscal 2021. This budget is funded in part with revenues of $6.7 million from prior year fund ballots. As I just mentioned, because of economic uncertainties, this budget includes an unprecedented reserve for contingencies of $2.4 million. Normally, we have a reserve for contingencies of around $600,000. That has been our norm for many, many years. We have, I have never seen a contingency reserve of $2.4 million in contingency in all the years I've dealt with the county. We also have done something very unique this year and all proposed equipment purchases of $1.6 million are in the county administration's department budget. They're not in the individual departments. So any capital outlay requests will have to be fueled through the county administration department and probably the county council to have any authority to promote those purchases during the fiscal year. So that's $1.6 million in that pot of money. So those two pots of money are $4 million that are basically being set aside for council oversight during the year. Contingency funds cannot be spent except for council approval and capital outlay. I imagine we will get some through processes in place of certain items that would come to council's attention, maybe some minor ones that the county manager will be able to approve and then inform you of those decisions. But basically, $4 million is being set aside where departments and agencies won't have access to them, they'll only be able to be spent with council approval. The other budget highlights is Talbot County Public Schools is funded at the state mandated maintenance of effort level, and this does provide an additional $1.5 million of operating funds for the Talbot County Public Schools. funds for the Talbot County Public Schools, and it also provides $4.4 million in debt service. The $4.4 million is the full amount of debt service for public school facilities. And as I mentioned before, the debt service is increasing by the $600,000 for the Easton Elementary School. There are no change in the number of full-time positions in this budget, but I do want to acknowledge that the council has already started in fiscal '20 of not necessarily filling positions as they become vacant. They have been coming to council for specific approval. So we are already starting to hold back positions and wait until we're sure we have available funding before any positions are filled. There are no salary increases for county employees, and in addition, there are no increases in real property or income tax rates in the proposed fiscal 2021 budget. This is an overview of our revenue streams, property taxes. Even though our rate will remain the same, they will go up based on increases in assessed value of our base. So we're projecting a 1.86% increase in property tax revenues. Income tax revenues are budgeted to go up slightly, but what's interesting is while they're budgeted to go up slightly, they're significantly less than what we are expecting to receive in the current fiscal year and what we received in fiscal '19. Income tax revenues in the proposed fiscal 21 budget is $26.9 million. I am projecting to receive $35 million in fiscal '20, and in fiscal '19, we received, I believe, almost $29 million in income tax revenues. Actually, we received $29.5 million in fiscal '19 of income tax revenues. So this number of 26.9 is a noticeable decrease from fiscal '29 and fiscal '20 expected revenues, even though it is a slight increase from our budget. In addition, we have local income tax of, sorry, other local taxes are expected to decrease. This is a category I will be honest, I'm concerned about. This is primarily recreation and transfer tax. And depending on how long we stay in the stay-at-home type situation, we could see dramatic decreases in those revenue streams going forward. But we really won't know until we get into fiscal '21 what will happen with those revenue streams. So we are projecting a slight decrease there. Stay-at-federal brands, we have slight increase, and a few other increases. The biggest increase is the number on the bottom, the use of prior year fund balance. That's going up 70% from $3.9 million to $6.7 million. But again, because we have no increases in income tax rates or real property tax rates, we did not put an education supplement in, so we had to fully fund the increase to the Board of Education and debt service as well as what we have normally funded with prior year fund balances. So that's really why that number is increasing. And this is just a chart that graphically shows where our revenue streams come from. Almost half of our revenue streams come from property taxes, which we pretty much are guaranteed to receive. Unfortunately, 40% of our budget comes from income tax and other local taxes. That's just over 40% of our budget. It totals $37.3 million, and those are vulnerable taxes in economic uncertain times. So we are, I believe, being cautious, but we will really not know until we're into fiscal 2021 what is really the trend with those numbers. And we will be, quite frankly, pretty far into fiscal 2021 before we'll know what those trend numbers are. But right now, I'm cautiously optimistic that particularly income tax will come in at budgeted levels. Part of, significant portion of what we will receive in fiscal '21 will be our payments for calendar year '19 taxes, which those should have been filed before any of this economic uncertainty came about. So those should not be impacted. And when you look at the expenditure side, I broke this out a little bit differently this year than prior years. The bulk of our budget, obviously, is public schools, and that, including debt service, is going up almost 4%. The next largest group is all other county operations, which is actually going down slightly, which reflects level funding. I have broken out capital outlay, which in fiscal '20 was budgeted in the departments. I've pulled that out for this slide so you can see the increase there. It is going up significantly, again, in part because under normal circumstances, we would be doing fair enough capital outlay purchases in the current year with unexpended funds or savings that we anticipate. I was concerned about doing that this year, so we've pushed that into fiscal '21, so that number is larger than what it has been in the past. But again, going back to the first slide, I believe, we had almost $4 million of requests for capital outlay. We've only funded $1.6 million. And transfers for other funds is going up, but the real reason for that going up is we have $85,000 being transferred to Capital Projects Fund. We did not have any transfer to Capital Projects Fund in fiscal '20. And here's a graphic showing that half our budget goes to county operations and the other half goes to the public school system. And no surprise, but we do have the two slices at the top that show the capital outlay of 1.7% and a contingency of 2.5%. And those are all going to be really discretionary funds in this budget for the council to use as the year progresses. And this slide, I think, is probably our most important slide of the evening. This shows our discretionary fund balance. In addition to this, we have our rainy day fund, which is also included in the general fund fund balance. Our rainy day fund is just over $13 million. But in addition to that, we have our discretionary fund balance. And if you look back at the first line on the screen, back at the end of fiscal 2009, we had a $21 million fund balance in the discretionary portion of our fund balance. Over the next two years, which was our last difficult economic downturn, we spent $17.1 million to balance our budget and get through those two fiscal years. We also did a number of other things to reduce costs. We did furloughs, we laid off staff, we eliminated programs. But even with doing that, we needed the $17 million to balance our budget in those two years. If you look at the bottom of the screen, going forward, what I'm projecting to have available for fiscal '22 and beyond is $18.6 million. So I think we are really well positioned to be able to weather whatever comes out from this pandemic and how long the economy will take to rebound. I think the county is really well positioned. I think we're very fortunate to be in this place. We have the discretionary fund balance plus our rainy day fund balance available to get us through the next few fiscal years. And I can't stress how important that is. This slide, I just want to go through very quickly and just highlight the items that are not included in this proposed budget. Some of these weren't even things that we considered during the budget process. Others were things that the council did specifically decide not to put into the proposed budget. Again, this budget has no increase in property or income tax rates. Those rates will stay the same for fiscal 2021. There are no additional full-time positions approved in this budget. There are no salary increases for county staff in this budget. Vacant positions are not being filled unless specifically approved by the county council. There is no 25-year retirement for law enforcement personnel. There are no additional EMS stations. We have needs for a new station in the northern part of the county to address response time. We have a need to relocate an EMS station in the Bay 100 area to address response times. Those are not included. The new facility for the sheriff's office is not in this budget. County storage currently at the Talbot County Business Center, a solution for that is not included. The new facility for the health department is not included. Department equipment requests, while we have earmarked $1.6 million in the county administration budget, no department has those funds in their budget. The request was $4 million, and we have earmarked $1.6 million. We may or may not spend that money on equipment. This budget, even though Talbot County Public Schools will receive $1.5 million above their current year appropriation, it is not the full request that they had asked. So we're not fully funding their request. This does not really factor in any increase of minimum wage going towards $15 an hour. Since we have level funded all our departments, any department that uses part-time people, they don't have additional funds in that line item to absorb the increase in minimum wage. So they'll have to look at staffing levels. And it does not include the replacement of the 40-year-old irrigation system at Houghton at Golf Course. And to wrap up, public hearings will be held on Tuesday, May 5, 2020, beginning at 2:00 PM and 5:00 PM in the Wyom Room at the Community Center. But again, because of current restrictions, there may or may not be public access to those meetings. So the public is strongly encouraged to submit written comments by Monday, May 4th, to thepubliccomment@talbotcountymd.gov email address. And for more information on the website, sorry, for more information on the proposed budget, they will be posted on the website over the next several days, but certainly by the end of the week. There will be the ordinance, this PowerPoint presentation, as well as some other documents available on the website.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lane. Any questions of Ms. Lane on her presentation? Always she does a stellar job of laying out the budget presentation for council and for the public to make sure that we are going to understand it. The one thing that we want to highlight yet again is the last slide to the citizens to make sure that they get those written comments to us back by that Monday, May the 4th date. And again, they want to submit those to publiccomment@talbotcountymaryland.gov so that we'll have those comments prior to our May 5 budget hearing. So any questions of Ms. Lane on the budget presentation? Stellar job, comments?
Comments?
Yeah.
So the schools are going, you know, not fully funded. However, they're the only department, if you consider them a department, that is getting an increase. And it's really difficult when that increase is really because of an escalator due to, again, a very strange formula in the state. There is a waiver process, and the waiver has to be submitted for maintenance of effort by April 20th. However, I do want to let you all know that Mako is working on an extension because April, third week of April is never a good time to figure out a waiver, but especially now when nobody really knows what the budget's going to be. So currently, most counties are planning to fund at maintenance of effort, but, you know, three months from now, six months from now, nine months from now, things will really go down the tubes. So Mako is working on at least getting an extension to that. And one of the things that I thought about was there are always 12 counties who get stuck kind of on this 2.5% or up to 2.5% escalator ride. And just for the same reason that I stated at the beginning to amend the agenda on the ballot question, there are so many people who are losing their jobs, struggling with their small business, and it seems very unfair that there's one protected group of people that won't be touched by this. And I think we can fully expect that we may end up not filling positions or having to do furloughs throughout the year, some days that are not paid if this continues. So one of the things that I would like to consider, since we don't exactly know the date or how they're going to respond, is to at least send a request, because it can't hurt, to waive us from the 2.5% escalator. We have chosen not to raise any taxes, and normally on the escalator or any additions to the school funding, we put an education supplement. We do have a healthy reserve fund to pay our bills should our revenues not come in. However, I would like to at least make the request of the state, along with maybe several other counties who are on this escalator of 2.5%, to truly flat fund. It's what we did for every other department. And since we just don't know, and there is a deadline right now, April 20th, we hope to get it extended, but I would like council to consider at least sending a letter. They will probably turn us down. But to see a group, and it's, you know, they're not more important than our public safety people, the retirement program, all of that. Teachers are incredibly important, but we have other departments, especially public safety, that we're not going to be able to do what we need to do. And if we could get some waiver of the escalator, that could be a million and a half dollars that we could then try to distribute more evenly across the entire county budget. You know, maybe some of it goes to the schools and some of it goes to public safety. So it's something that I would like you all to consider, at least having a letter drafted and sent up. The worst that can happen is they say no. If they say yes, we can still make a decision later whether or not to accept the waiver. But I think that it's something that Mako is working on, and they're also trying to maybe change some of the provisions of what they usually look for in a waiver process. Normally, it has to do with your tax rates and your wealth formulas. But I think that the state is going to be, or the MSD or whoever it is, be more open to these very potentially huge downfalls, and not just for Talbot County, but for the state as a whole. They've obviously done a hiring freeze, other counties.
I'm going to do as a point of order.
Okay, sorry.
Not that your comments are overtaken, but what's before council right now is the introduction of this legislation.
Sorry.
So as a point of order, I'm going to ask that you hold off on that.
So it's not on the agenda. Can we come back to the discussion of a waiver letter?
Sure. I mean, you can have that discussion, but I just want to finish up this matter.
So I didn't add that to the agenda. I just want to make sure that we can do that after we introduce the budget.
Any comment from Ms. Lane on the budget presentation that we just heard? Any comment or question?
Yes. Ms. Lane, I just want to thank you for putting everything together just back. I know it was really a very, very unusual year for you and all of us. Hopefully, this won't happen again. But you've done a great job with Cameron Ford on some of the contenders and money. But I think you've done a great job balancing out what we need to do and looking past what the next, you know, year's going to be for us. So I really appreciate it.
I'd like to just follow up and also thank you. This is a unique budget and for you mean times, and I'm glad that you were able to find a way to craft this budget in the way we did. It's very uncertain times, and we need to be able to have the cash on hand to do what we need to do, but also be able to make those decisions as we go down the road. So I'm glad that we set this budget up the way that we did. We kept things flat on the economy with individuals losing careers, businesses just on brink, trying to get through. This is a time when I looked out to help the community, and I want to be there to support them and make sure that the council's in a position to help them. And I think that we are with this budget. So thank you very much.
So naturally, go ahead. Did you have?
I just want to say, I'll echo the thanks, and my biggest concern with this budget is one of the items that we've omitted from it, which we've moved over into the one of the items that we've omitted from it, which we've moved over into the, over into the contingency. And that has to do with the funding for the staff itself. There is no step increase for any of our staff here. Our staff are not on furlough. They are not on homework. They are essential workers, and they are doing, they are doing tough duty while virtually everybody else is at home. And I think that we need to be sure to circle back as early as possible in the budget year and reconsider that. We don't know what those circumstances will be at this point in time, but it's something that we do need to remember to go back and revisit. We, I just am not, I'm not very comfortable with the concept of balancing this budget on the backs of our employees. And we do have an excellent workforce that we need to retain, and we have some open positions in places like our sheriff's department that we're just not competitive in filling now. That's something that we'll need attention during the course of this coming fiscal year.
So my actual comment is that this is not the way we normally do a budget, and I think Angela presented it very well, as always. Normally, we wrestle for about eight weeks going through everything line by line and making these decisions. We basically deferred all of that, that 4 million dollars that's in the administration budget for capital outlay and the 2 and the 0.4 million dollars in contingency, is for the requests, the things like what Mr. Lush just said, you know, salary increases and filling positions, because we're just not able to make those decisions right now. You know, we could budget for it, and then when the budget doesn't come in, then what do we do? So at least right now, we have vacancies where you're not actually having to possibly furlough somebody. So you'll see this as an ongoing budget throughout the year, little by little. This is not normally how we do it, but I appreciate that we have done it this way. Let's hope that we can at least maintain the flat budget and that we don't have to go any deeper. But thankfully, we've always had good councils that have been conservative and have been able to build that discretionary fund back up to get us through the next couple of years should we need to.
With that being said, Madam Secretary, I will ask that you call the role to introduce the legislation, if you would, introduction.
I actually haven't read the title.
You have not? I thought you did. Okay, why don't you read that title for us then?
I have to establish the 2020-2021 Annual Budget and Appropriation Orders.
Okay. I think I read it. So we do have a reading of the title of the ordinance. I would now call for a role for introduction of the ordinance. Madam Secretary?
Mr. Pat?
Aye.
Mr. DeVillio?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Lush?
Aye.
Okay, the mayor is now introduced and will receive bill number 1445. And as we've said numerous times already, we'll have a public hearing on May the 5th. That first public hearing will be underway at 2:00 PM, and then we'll have a second public hearing at 5:00 PM. Again, please submit those in writing. We gave the address out numerous times, and we'll give it out one more time before we wrap things up today. Ms. Lane, thank you very much. We appreciate you and your hard work of your staff.
So that question that I was addressing before she runs away?
Before she runs away.
About the letter to the state.
I have some reservations about that. I mean, a letter of that magnitude may cause some people in the community to might want to give voice to it. I'll leave it up to you all what you want to do, but you asked for a waiver of the...
Escalator.
Escalator.
Just the escalator piece of it again.
Which again, the state's probably not. As a point of order, I think that you would have to now try to amend the agenda to add that to the agenda before the item is discussed.
Right.
So being that currently the date for the letter is April 20th, they have not changed that deadline yet. That's, I apologize for not thinking of that earlier, but could we amend the agenda to at least discuss whether or not we should consider sending a letter just in case this deadline doesn't get changed, because it is only a week away.
Okay, that's your motion? I need a second to have a discussion.
Yeah, one sec, please.
Yeah, it doesn't mean we'll do it, it's just to have it ready to go.
I received an email earlier from Dr. Grebless about some waivers that she was applying for. I wanted to check on the dates that she was submitting. She did that April 14th today.
Okay, the chair here, no second on the motion regarding the waiver letter, the motion was failed at this time. Moving on, thank you very much, Ms. Lane, again, for all that you're doing. We certainly appreciate it. We'll see you on May 5th, if not sooner.
Yes.
There are several matters that are on the agenda that have been postponed, and I'll just read this for the audience. Public hearings of Resolution 281 and Resolution 282 postpone for sewer 2 the Otobet County's March 16th emergency declaration and March 31st amended declarations. Those two matters, there will be the Lakeside Development as well as the Comprehensive Ward and Sewer Plan. Those have been pushed back to go back to the Public Works Advisory Board and the Planning Commission. Hopefully, Mr. Clark can get both of those groups together, or these coincidences together, and we can get those back on the agenda by the end of April, if not by the first May meeting. So we're going to pull those off. They're not critical matters in the discussion I had with the county manager, so we'll wait to those, those matters will be forward to those committees, and then they'll come back to us and then we'll put them back on the agenda. Okay? All right. Mr. House, believe us, all the council has, I'll turn your portion of the agenda back over to you.
So, Council, Mr. Edwards is here regarding the recommendation to award Big 20-02 Firmishing and Delivery with possible application of CRS 2L emulsified asphalt with polymer and/or CS-2 emulsified asphalt. There were two separate work items. We're requesting your approval to award to Slurry Pavers Incorporated the low bid on work item 1 and alternate 1, firmishing and delivery of the emulsified asphalt in the amount of $1.65 per gallon and $96 per gallon for the alternate 1.
Mr. Edwards, good to see you. Do you have any comment or any addition on the recommendation?
No, it was pretty straightforward. We had two bids, and they come in at the lowest reductions three years, several times.
Okay. Mr. Pat, do you want me to do work item 2, and you can do it together, or do you want them separately? This is your portion of the agenda. If House, any way you want to handle it, I'll go over to it.
So I think since we're done with low bid, we'll do them together if it's okay with council. The other is for work item 2 for Hammacher East Limited, and it is in the value of $1.60 per gallon and $2 per gallon for the alternate.
Okay. Any questions, council, on either one of those?
I, Mr. Edwards, I thought at one time I heard that we were moving away from Slurry Paving. Is that just the name?
Yeah, it's the name of the company. Yeah, this is all liquid asphalt with polymer.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Hearing none. Madam Secretary on 20-02, please call the rule.
Mr. Pat?
Aye.
Mr. DeVillio?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Lush?
Aye.
Mr. House?
Next, Council, staying with Mr. Edwards, is we're going to award a contract for tar and chipping of approximately 26.56 miles of county road. That will go to American Paving Fabrics Incorporated in the amount of 57 cents per square yard plus $1 per square yard for any patching. And this would be, these prices are coming from a contract already in Somerset County that they had bid out competitively. They have, we have, the roads department has $225,000 available in their fiscal year 20 asphalt line item for this work. This is proposed in particular because of COVID-19 and the inability of our department to get out there and do all the work ourselves.
Yes, that's correct. Right now, we're milling these sections of road. Most of the corridor areas are worst area right now where we're at. And what we're finding is, we're trying to get rid of the crown of the road, and when you mill that out, some places we're hitting dirt at a half inch. So why we don't really know, it's just kind of weird. But some of these roads, we're going to have to do patching and then do two layers. But because of staffing, we can't mill it and repair it and tar and chip it all at the same time. We've done this, this will be our third year that they've helped us do it, and they're the only company that's capable of it. But we'll be there with them, and we'll be doing the work with them.
Great. And we'll finish up. I'm looking for a bid number on this. I don't see one, Mr. House.
There is, Mr. Pat, because there's not a planned project simply because of COVID-19 and the inability of our department to do the work themselves.
Okay, got you. So council, chairman entertaining motion, this is a request for a contract of tar and chipping of approximately 26.56 miles.
Yes, and that could be cut in half, but yes.
Is there a question? I don't just have one question.
When you said, so when you're stripping it, so you're almost stripping a half inch, and there's some spots where you get dirt?
We find that every year. What happens is, most of our roads, most of our county roads are old farm lanes back 60, 80, even 100 years. So whether it's in the left of the road or the middle of the road, when you get out of that base, it just kept getting wider each year. So there's no subbase there. So it pushes and ruts, and when it ruts, it just shoves the solid material to the right or left, and you get a very thick layer. Usually where it ruts is where we're funding. So we patch it, and then we wedge it with asphalt, and then we go over the punch there. And just to be clear, we're using our liquid asphalt budget, so only a portion of this goes towards the actual contractor, because the rest of it will go towards the liquid asphalt, which we've already got a lower bid on approved for last year. So we're not just giving them that kind of money.
So we're hiring, we're hiring out 26 miles.
We're hiring out their equipment and their crew to work with us and use our stones and our tar. So we may get 26 miles, we may get 10. Depends on how bad they are. If they're down to dirt, we have to do patching in two layers.
But the answer is yes, this isn't what we normally do. We are bringing this company in to work with your department to get the job done during this fiscal year.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Not because of furloughs or layoffs?
I'm assuming that's why we're doing it.
That's why we're doing it, yes. That's why we're requesting it now. Normally, we do it in the fall of the year, and we do more roads, we do 30 or 40 miles. But because we're not there with a full crew, it's, you know, costs a lot more money.
So Mr. Edwards, along with many other departments, has wrote, I mean, his crew, said they aren't all working at once. They're working biweekly.
This week, we had nine. Count myself. But they were busy.
Okay. Any further questions on it? You don't have a bid number, but we do have your graniters to look over.
But it is competitively priced based on work by another county who did competitively bid.
I just have one more.
Go ahead.
On stuff, sorry. So the reason is, we only have roughly 10 on site. So if we have people out, you don't want any more than 10 on the site so we can do the work.
I have my way, they'll all be back.
Yeah. So you can, we appreciate that.
Safety.
But you can't work two different sites at the same time? I mean, you have to put...
Well, our problem is you can't move them around. You can't get the crews. So we're, we took the tape measure and measured head to head in a one ton, and we can actually put two people in a one ton that normally carries four, five people.
No, 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 that's a separate project.
Yeah, but I've got to have vehicles to move them to get to that project.
We don't want to carry them to our...
We don't have enough vehicles to get more than one or two projects going at a time. So for instance, when we mow grass, normally we take one truck and five people, one formation and four mowers. Now we have to take two trucks and seven, and then with one pickup, just moves them from mower to mower to mower to mower, one at a time.
So it's just a vehicle that you need to move people, not a truck or a...
No, you got to have, most of our people are in a vehicle by themselves or a piece of equipment by themselves, all but the one ton. And that's because we have the distance in there to be safe. I'm not making that clear?
I'm not clear.
You're not clear?
No, I'm not. I'm just trying to understand, so you have the manpower to do it.
It's not what I said.
No, I meant that, but I'm just saying. But we have the manpower to do it if you were up and running.
Yeah, if we were up and running, we would have the manpower to do it. But we have done this, this is the third year in a row that we have used this company with a bid to do this work. But normally, we get twice as much work, because we're able to do more in front of them and put down more tar and chip. So we're spraying with our truck as well as they're spraying with theirs. So we're basically running two crews. So we mill, patch, wedge, and level in sometimes 30, 40, 50 miles. And then we go close them all up in the fall when the tractor doesn't eat it up and don't blow the stone off, and it's not too hot for the tar. The reason we're trying to get this done now is not to spend money, it's to fix the roads we're milling and to beat the temperatures before they start getting up into the 80s and 90s and get these roads treated that we're milling now.
So right now, the staff that you have is working one week off, on and one week off?
Yes, ma'am, except for myself and Lois in the office and all of them.
And I assume they're getting paid their full salaries?
Yes, ma'am.
Absolutely, yes, we are within the department employee that's at home during...
So there's got to be a way to utilize, I know you're still a little bit understaffed, I recognize that, but there ought to be a way that we can use as other staff to do something rather than them just being at home, some other...
I'm going to call a point of order again. What's before council right now is this bid on American Paving, whether or not we're going to move forward in this or not, not the roads department manpower or the way Mr. Edwards is operating that. We can certainly have a conversation with him and the county manager offline. So for a point of order, what's before council right now is to request to go with American Paving and Fabric for tar and for road construction on county roads. Mr. Edwards is competitive in bid. You have the pricing in front of you. I think the total work is around $225,000, so...
So, Mr. Edwards, normally, so for the last three years?
This would be the third.
This is the third year, and normally you have your crews running in combination with them, and we get a lot more...
Absolutely.
Lot more miles done at a time. Because right now, you're not able to use your crews out there. You're still maintaining your same status quo of bringing these guys in to do what they do, and you'll use your guys as you can.
We'll still be out there with them, but we just don't have enough to run another whole crew.
So we're going to get a lot less miles.
Strictly because of the governor's, yeah, so it's a short... Okay, thank you.
That's what I was trying to understand what you were...
Did you understand it now?
Yeah. I mean, and to your point, I mean, I didn't have something on the floor here, but I needed to understand what he was doing, and I did understand it, you know?
Well, I wonder if this makes this one of those possible reimbursable expenses due to COVID. We are not able to utilize them because of the social distancing, and so we're having to spend additional money or get a lot less miles for the dollar, right? You might not get 26 miles, I'm just saying, you might only get 10. I just wonder if that's something to keep track of, so that when, you know, there is federal money that is coming down to the states and the counties for COVID-related expenses. So I would ask that you keep track of anything like this, where you could put a dollar amount on it.
Yes, ma'am. We're definitely doing that, and we'll have records of everything we're doing. But just for the record, it may only be that, depends on the deterioration of the road. You can go a mile that's great, and then all of a sudden, you got, you know, 3,000 or 4,000 feet that's terrible. And that's what happens.
But you're only working with half the crew, which means the expense is going to be ultimately greater for what we end up getting done. So I would just say, you know, again, now for any department, anything that we're having to incur, and I think most departments are aware, but this just strikes me as one that possibly you could submit a little something for.
So just for council's information, each county, each department has been tasked with keeping strict logs of any COVID-19 related expenses because we need to straighten it for reimbursement or those that qualify. And you don't even have that information.
I'm going to call a motion on this. Second, second one is calling any further discussion? Second, second member is calling. Any further discussion? I, I would just say, um, Mr. Hollis did send out to council his minimization of county departments. If you have not received that, please contact them to get that. Uh, he did go through how those departments will be handled while we're going through this COVID-19 epidemic. So if you have questions about that, he did make it out. Uh, we have a second and a motion. Madam Secretary, please call your role.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Mr. DeVillea?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Council next, Mr. Clark stepping in for a recommendation to award bid 19-17. Request for proposals, public county Maryland, Region 5 Tillman, villages of Fairbank and Barnet accepted elimination. Engineering services, preliminary engineering report and environmental report. He and his department are recommending that it be awarded to RAL Engineering Incorporated in the amount of $29,780 contingent upon review and approval by USDA. This work will be charged to the sanitary district and be partially reimbursed under approved grant from the USDA in the amount of $12,000.
Thank you very much. Mr. Clark, for your, any further comment on the, uh, bid process or?
Just to let you know, once we, once we wrap up the preliminary engineering report, we'll then work to submit that to Rural Development for a grant loan package to an, uh, extent or after the, uh, Barnet and Tullman.
So we'll take note that there was a, you know, you did a, a ranking order, but it was definitely not the little bid. There was another one that was about $10,000 less. So what else went into it? What was that other company lacking that's worth an extra $10,000?
Uh, we actually looked at, I think with RAL, they have just a, you know, they know the area a lot better. And we, I think at this point, you know, from the other firm, I guess it was a little better, which I believe was McCrone. We haven't had a lot of work with McCrone, and, and so we technically haven't done a lot of work with them engineering-wise, with the sanitary district. Uh, with RAL Incorporated, we have worked with them pretty extensively with the store, working down at St. Michael's. Uh, at the same time, uh, you know, we've been doing some work with them with the smart site plan. So I, you know, we felt like, you know, they were actually the best qualified firm.
Right, but now we especially have to be watching our pennies, and you know, who knows? We might be getting requests from people trying to pay their bills in the sanitary districts, and whether they look for some reduction in those billings or, um, they're just simply not able to pay those bills. And, you know, council will have to decide at some point if we are going to give any type of relief to people who are unable to pay their, unable to pay their bills. So while it's really nice to say, I'm comfortable with this person, when you have that big of a price difference, you, you need to, you know, and in the times that we're dealing with right now, remember, this bill goes back to the people in the sanitary district. And if they are unable to pay it, we would like to give them some type of relief when they're, you know, they don't have a job. Then how are they gonna pay their bills? So $10,000, how's that break out per household? I'm not sure.
Well, I, I think what, you know, really quickly, I mean, you, uh, let's say, you know, associated with RAL Incorporated, there are $29,780. Uh, we have a $12,000 grant. Uh, that means that, you know, there's an expensive $17,708 that would be applied to users. Uh, those users, roughly, I think there's 110 users, but assuming 100, that would break out to basically being about $177.80 per user that then could ultimately be wrapped up into the loan package, which would then be over a 30-year period. And the loan rate that we can give, I mean, we're rolling down this 1.5%.
The $12,000 would be, uh, the grant amount regardless of the contract amount?
That's correct.
So you would, so you're talking $17,000, but if the, the other one was a $20,000 bid for $12,000 grant, then you'd only be talking about $8,000 instead of 17. So, I mean, again, it makes a difference.
It does, it does. But I, I would say, you know, I haven't, I personally have not worked with McCrone. I have worked with RAL. And so I would say, you know, we're probably, my brothers and I would say I would go with RAL before I go with McCrone at this point.
It's 50% more, though.
I, I understand.
It's not 10%, it's 50% more.
And, but I would say.
I think to Mr. Clark's credit, we've been down this road before. When it comes to these ranking systems that the state is requiring all counties to do, uh, they have to rank them out based on the number of variables, the rankings in front of you. Uh, it looked to be very close between RAL and, uh, it looks like Century, one point off. Although Century, you know, was about, it's like $7,000 additional. But, um, this ranking formula that the state is going to require us to do kind of dictates today for us as far as.
It doesn't dictate who we choose. It's not on this one, the other one, that other one did.
As far as, as far as, as far as, as far as Mr. Clark was saying previously, as far as those applications, um, with the state, um, there is, um, uh, there is a consideration that the state has in the ranking that has to be drawn, so.
I don't, I don't think that's the case in, in this. The state, doesn't matter, doesn't matter in the state which one of these we chose, right?
Well, actually, technically, because of the way the RFP was written, we have to, we were recommending, under the RFP, we did a review committee. Uh, if we were to go and, we would have to actually rebid it. We'd have to come back to the county council and, and basically ask the council to reject all bids and then rebid it, and then establish the parameters and be based upon a little.
We couldn't award it to McCrone tonight.
It's not the recommendation that you're getting from?
I'm looking at the points, and I'm going 425.2 versus 425.05. We're talking about .1, 15 hundredths of a point. We're not even talking about, they were, they were so close. They both had 425 points. There was virtually no difference. I understand that you're familiar with RAL and you're comfortable, but we're talking about a 50% price difference for 15 one hundredths of a point.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna call the matter. I understand your point, Ms. Price. I'm gonna call the matter on bid 19-17 for a motion.
Mr. Pack, before you call the matter, I think it's important to clarify the record related to potentially in the future, any bid protest in order to clarify that as a part of this process, the bid included a technical review committee. And the technical review committee existed of one, two, three, four, five, five individuals. Uh, Mr. Clark was one of those individuals. That technical evaluation scoring was more than our familiarity with RAL. That technical evaluation scoring was related to all parts of, um, their bid being compliance with, um, the bid submitted. In order for these documents to be reimbursed by the state, we have to file, follow a competitive bidding process. So this will be submitted to Rural Development. The process to get to the scoring difference, um, it's important to note that the technical evaluation scoring indicated RAL received for all the technical points um, that they submitted, um, is, is the basis for the analysis. Then the technical rankings added to the scoring, which indeed results in a very close tie, close between number one and number two. But, um, the, the analysis is a combination of the technical evaluation scoring and the price to get to the ultimate number. And so much more goes into it than the very brief analysis that Mr. Clark was trying to do for expediency here. And so for the record, I just want to make sure that that is, that is included, that there is more that goes into the decision than has been said today.
Thank you very much for the thought. I, I absolutely agree with your decision, just not the fact that we know him and we like him. It's, uh, based on the, the technical evaluation scoring that you alluded to, and that does go back up to the state for review. So I'm calling the matter on 19-17 as presented for, uh, bid number, I'm sorry, 19, I'm sorry, bid number 19-17. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second by Mr. DeVillea, second by Mr. Callahan. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Secretary, please call your role.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Mr. DeVillea?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
No.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clark. Appreciate that. Um, moving on, Mr. Hollis. Just, just like here?
Yep.
Council next is, um, a request for approval. Uh, bid 19-19, request for proposals, qualified institutional retirement plan providers to administer and communicate the county's 457B and 401A plans for public county. Requesting approval to award that bid to Empower. A total of five companies submitted bids. Three finalists were interviewed extensively with Empower being the selected provider. A number of reasons, which Ms. Lane can go into, excellent website, an application, extended call center hours, ability to provide investment advice, produce participant fees, and strong employee engagement programs. So we had an outside consultant, Bolton, make the recommend, uh, go with us through this process as well. It wasn't just done in-house. And their fee is $32,500, which we also like approval to pay, um, out of the tishler study fees that we did have spend this year. We'll take one of that, add them up as well. Um, listen, I'll turn it up to you, and I'll have my comments after you.
I believe Mr. Hollis really outlined the whole process. Um, he actually started this process in August of 2019. Once the county was made aware that our current 457 plan, 401A plan provider were charging fees that were out of line with what the market should be. So that was the impetus, um, for starting this process. Um, the county does have a fiduciary responsibility to our employees to, um, not have our employees overcharge for fees unless we're made aware, but we really had no choice but to find another provider. Um, I will say, we did allow our current provider to bid. They were not, um, as strong as the three candidates that we did interview. Um, and it was a selective, a number of county staff members were involved in the interview process with the three firms, as well as council members. And Bolton also was involved in the interview process. Um, so it was a cross-section of, of people who were involved in the interview process for the three companies that we did, um, interview. And it was the opinion of everybody that Empower was the strongest company for our, for these plans. Um, they did have excellent website, and they do have a phone app. The extended call hour, call service hours was really important because the other firms didn't include any Saturday hours. And that's often weekends is when people are reviewing financial documents. So that was important. And they can give advice rather than just guidance. A number of the firms could only make suggestions that, well, you could do this, or you could do this. And, um, Empower has staff members who are financial advisors, so they are able to give advice to employees, which we felt was really, um, a positive for our employees going forward. So again, this is, um, this is our recommendation that we do move our deferred compensation plans to Empower. The timing, we may not be able to do it for July 1, so we may, we may work with them and see if we can't do it for maybe a September 1 transfer at this point. But we would like council approval to, um, start the process to move our deferred compensation plans to Empower from last year.
And I will say, um, sitting on this selection committee, um, the Empower group, uh, they were, I was very impressed with the way they came out and presented themselves as a team, uh, the way their platform looked or their layout looked as far as going into their site and helping out our, our workers. Um, that one piece that Ms. Lane alluded to, having that financial advisor, so if you want to make a change as you move through your career, you might want to be more aggressive in your deferred, um, comp plan. At the beginning, midway through your career, you might want to pull back a bit. Having that advisor, um, and I've, I've worked with advisors before, that can kind of guide you through that and kind of give you suggestions, uh, is very important. Not everybody understands, um, stocks and how, how to make those kind of, uh, financial choices. So having an advisor was very important. Uh, some of the groups didn't have that, as Ms. Lane alluded to, so they did. And, uh, I cannot, uh, underscore the, of the voting team as well. Uh, can't call their names right now. We've got a lady that, that was there. They, they, they voted an excellent job walking us through this, vetting out these, uh, different financial, uh, investment institutions. Uh, they did a lot of the legwork and, and made sure that we understood what these, which these groups were bringing to us. So, um, again, Bolton did an excellent job at what we asked them to do as well. And I, I want to say my, my thanks to that team, uh, that, that worked with us. So, um, those are my comments. And on Ms. Price said on some of those meetings as well, I don't know whether or not she was impressed as I was.
Oh, definitely. I mean, I think there were, there were two companies that definitely rose to the top, but this one definitely was, was the cream on top or the cherry on top. Um, and being one who is, has decided to use the 457B plan and the website of our current company, I mean, is just non-existent. I mean, you can go click on a PDF document to see your last month's thing, but there's nothing interactive whatsoever, and it's going to be so helpful. You can't download anything into financial software. Um, so it is, you know, it's more than just a simple website, obviously. But in this case, when people are looking at their finances, having the tools that, to, to see where you are along the path to retirement and how close you are, um, I think makes it more attainable to say, oh, I'm at 76%. I'm getting close. To be able to do that is, is going to be very, um, helpful. And obviously, being able to get an advisor, I, you know, is probably going to be, um, a lot of people could want that advice right off the bat, and then hopefully that'll level out, because I think it's still only one person. But, um, it was, it was very impressive, and I'm looking forward to that. I do have, um, just one question, um, not about the company or anything, but if, if it's not, for when it's getting rolled out, people, of course, will have to make those decisions of what funds to put it in. Will there be some lead time before it gets rolled out? Or will, you know, for the employees who are using this particular program?
There wouldn't be time, but, um, our recommendation was that everyone would go into, I'm not sure what you call them.
General fund, I think?
Well, no, it would go into a targeted date fund. So if your retirement date is 2030, you would go into a fund that has that balance of stocks. Um, and then we would encourage people to go from there to make their own allocations. But at least that would put them in a vehicle that should, can maximize their investment earnings over the period they have between whenever the rollover happens and their retirement date, if they don't do anything.
Are they, if they want to make that selection prior to the rollover date, can they?
Yes, yes, we'll definitely have time.
Because I didn't know if there's any penalty to move from one fund to another.
No, no penalty per se, obviously. If you bought into one fund and the market is up or down, you could lose or gain some money based on where the market is, the day you put it in.
Employees will have access to what the funds are and can make that selection before.
That will be rolled out ahead of time, yes.
Thank you.
So I said, you know, like, I don't know, I think maybe one of the last meetings, uh, I was very impressed with Bolton. That was the only group that I met. One, one of the most important things about taking care of your employees is making sure that you've got good benefits. And, and, you know, the last plan was terrible. I'm glad that you guys took this initiative to find something better. You've got, you've got a great plan here with two of the top, um, fund managers in the country, very in the world. So I, I think this is a maximum way to take care of employees while reducing the expense that they were paying. It wasn't fair to them. Uh, I'm, I'm happy to make this move.
Thank you.
Would you like a motion?
All right, I'll hold two things, Ms. Price. I'm going to ask that we make the motion to, um, move on deferred comp, yes, deferred comp. Deferred compensation, thank you, plan over to Empower, but at the same time.
Pay the fee.
Pay, pay the $32,500 over to Bolton that they, they literally deserve, so.
Be happy to make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, any questions about that? Not, Madam Secretary, please call your role.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Mr. DeVillea?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
We're requesting council approval to send a letter of support to the Maryland Conservatory Trust for historic Easton's grant application to restore Asbury United Methodist Church in Easton. No county funds required.
You have a granite, this council has a $100,000 grant for, uh, improvement to the Asbury United Methodist Church.
Mr. Pack, as, as before with this, uh, since I'm a member, the governor's appointed me to the Maryland Heritage Area's authority, uh, to, to vote on this would essentially be sending a letter to myself. Uh, I'll accuse myself here so that I'm entitled to vote on it when it gets up to the NHAA.
Thank you, Grant Buck, Ms. Lusher for pointing it out to us again. Mr. Lusher's accusing himself. Uh, any further discussion? Anyone else accusing themselves? Hearing none, chairman entertaining a motion at this time.
So moved.
Move by Mr. DeVillea, second by Mr. Callahan. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Secretary, please call your role.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Mr. DeVillea?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Mr. Lush?
I abstained.
Requesting council approval to send a letter of support to the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation for Hornpoint Laboratories' grant application entitled "Dream to Gray: Oyster Veneers, A Novel Approach to Greening Grain Infrastructure." Project is proposed for breakwaters in several locations, including along the Billburn Fishing Pier, State Park in Talbot County. No county funds required.
Shall we entertain a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second. Second one, Mr. Callahan, any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Secretary, please call your role.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Mr. Devilia?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Lush?
Aye.
Council, what I consider one of the most important items tonight, we're requesting your approval to send a letter to the United States Coast Guard in strong opposition to the proposed closure of the U.S. Coast Guard Station in Oxford. I believe most of you have been contacted by different citizens about how important this is.
We have been contacted by Dr. Mouse as well, and this, this. Shall we entertain a motion?
I will move to send a letter.
Second.
Move by Mr. Lush, second one, Mrs. Price. Any further discussion?
Question, I mean, as much as we're sending letters and other people are sending letters, is this a done deal? Or do you think that this is going to have much of an impact? Or you just have no idea?
My conversation with Dr. Mouse is very brief. I know if you read, what I read in the paper was a consolidation to the Annapolis Coast Guard Station. Whether it's a done deal or not, who knows?
They haven't sold the bill.
And technically, this is the comment period, right?
Yeah, yeah, and I think that Oxford also sent a letter of affirmative agreement, right?
Correct. And Mr. Shamp has sent a letter as well.
Okay.
The deadline is tonight, anybody, on one hundred and fifty.
We got to do this right away.
And Ms. Andrew, who's here, if you have any. Cassandra, did you want to say anything additional? Council's in full support of the letter of opposition.
Oh, we're absolutely in support.
Yes, the question was, you know, we have a chance of them actually retaining it here.
You know, I've talked to both of our, I've talked to our federal delegation representatives today. They have teed up a letter. So I would say nothing's a done deal, as long as the comment period is open. So I would send a letter, if you would, please.
Yes, of course.
Here we have a motion by Mr. Lush, second by Mrs. Price. Any further discussion on the letter? Hearing none, Madam Secretary, please call your role.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Mr. Devilia?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Lush?
Aye.
Any council just to quick appointments, please? Commission on the AG asking for the reappointment of Kate Stanton with the Talbot County Health Department, and Jennifer Marshy from Elmstead, and the new appointment of Rachel Smith to fill a seat vacant.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Second by Mrs. Callahan, any further discussion?
This is, I said on that, it's two people that are just reappointing to it, and one who works for London Dairy, which is where the seat is being vacated, so it's a smooth transition. They have attended meetings, she's attended meetings for the last two. And it would be.
Great, thank you. Great. Hearing none, Madam Secretary, please call your role in the appointments.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Mr. Devilia?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Lush?
Aye.
And finally, council, the Public Works Advisory Board, you have a vacancy for District Four, the Cordova District. We're asking for your approval to appoint Dan Billingsley of Quan.
Is there a motion?
Aye.
Second. Move by Mr. Devilia, second one, Mr. Callahan. Any further discussion on Dan Billingsley to be appointed to the Public Works Advisory Board? Hearing none, Madam Secretary, please call your role.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Mr. Devilia?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Lush?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hollis. Regarding public comment, due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic, there will be no public access to the Y of Rum. Citizens who wish to provide public comment should submit their comments in writing to thepubliccomment@talbotcountymd.gov. Those should be sent in, those should have been sent in no later than the fourteenth, which is today's date, by twelve noon. Now looking at, Madam Secretary, do we have any public comment that came in? No? Okay, so there is no public comment that we receive today. Again, I will now turn it over for council comment. And I'll start with, to my left, Mrs. Price. Any council comment?
I think we probably all have the same, same thoughts on our minds, that we're really concerned, obviously, for the health crisis, but also very much the economic impact and what that does to people's mental states and the stress level and, you know, the illness and things that that can bring as well. And, you know, we're all doing the best that we can. Let us hope that with all this additional testing that's coming out, and maybe even being able to find out, you know, the antibody test, the blood test that's coming out in some places in the country, we'll know, because, you know, some places, you know, thirty percent of people have already had it and never knew it. And that would be, that would be good news to know that it's not as, you know, it's deadly for some people. But for many of us who, it's not. So the sooner that we can start to turn the dimmer switch back on, I think the better for everybody in any capacity, certainly for the county budget, for everybody's budget. So hang in there just a little bit longer, and let us hope that we have good news by the end of the month or the beginning of May.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Price, Mr. Lush, move right along.
I have nothing further.
Thank you very much, Ms. Devilia.
Just briefly, so the Neighborhood Service Center celebrated the fiftieth anniversary. There was going to be a big party and event, fundraising at the milestone. The deposit was already put down, and unfortunately, because of the nineteen, it had to be canceled. Which is even more difficult with them, when you think about fundraising, and it pushes things out in the fall when they can't fundraise because of.
They're on a blackout period.
United Way.
United Way, blackout period.
So the milestone turned around, and instead of losing your deposit, how about we make a donation of five hundred Easter baskets that they put together for kids to pass out at the Easton High School? And it was amazing. They, they set fifty aside to take over to the Neighborhood Service Center, and we ran out, and Mr. Pack was there. And so they went ahead and passed those out. They went back to the milestone and packed fifty more to take them over to the multicultural resource.
Yeah.
Yep, that's right, so. So we went through, checked, made sure everybody was from Talbot County. There were a lot of families there, a lot of kids. We had, the Easter bunny was out there waving, some pictures were taken. It was, it was very heartwarming. It was great in the milestone to turn that around and make it a nice event, out of something that unfortunately didn't work out for the Neighborhood Service Center. So that, the more I get involved with that group, the more amazed I am at how generous, everybody is there, Maryland, all the way down, just great big hearts who are fantastic for the community, really supporting those who are in the most need. So I really want to thank both of those groups.
Scotty?
Yeah, I, you know, we're in some tough times right now, like Mrs. Price said, with the citizens, working, government. I really would like to do a shout-out to staff. Andy, your staff, the departments, what you do every day is a big deal. Every time I call you, I'm sure you take a big breath. But all getting aside, you do a great job. Corey, you do a great job. You know, we've been, we've all been on these calls. And, you know, the participation of the community, the business, Cassandra being on the business end of it, trying to keep everybody, the communication to everybody and help them understand where we're at, the statistics for Talbot County. And I really am very proud that we're sort of holding our own here. You know, everybody sort of is being, you know, a little bit, you know, holding their breath when it comes to, you know, how many people are going to, you know, get it. But we just have to have the faith that everything's going to be good and have a positive attitude with what's happening. So I just really wanted to make sure, Andy, that you're doing a great job. And I really do appreciate, you know, your whole staff, and Jessica, and Mary, and just, and Susan, everybody that's got a hand in this. It's really affected all of us. You know, I'm very fortunate that I'm working. There's a few people that are working. But trust me, we're in the danger zone too. Meeting people, even though people are home safe and we're trying to work, and we're trying to make a living and trying to get out there with people, it's dangerous on our part too. Dangerous for our workers. So there's a lot of pressure on all the business group and all the bosses out there that run, you know, all these companies and stuff. So it's tough on them too. And what Mr. Devilia said about the handing out the baskets and stuff, so I want to give you kudos to, Corey, that Robbie Falter and Molly called me and said they were really impressed with you coming out, helping them, and really being a part of all that. So they were really happy with all of you guys being there. So he specifically called me and said, you know, where was I at?
He was calling you out.
Exactly. He called me out, and, you know, praised you guys. So, but anyway, more than anything, I just want the citizens to realize that we're there for them and really trying to protect them. And some of the decision-making that we have to make is in their basket. And hopefully, like Ms. Price said, hopefully in a few weeks that things are gradually going to get better and people can get back to work. So that's what I want, so. Thank you.
So I just wanted to go on, and I forgot to thank, or congratulate Tony Cooper Smith on the birth of their new child. So congratulations to them. And they will certainly be missed for a short period of time. And we hope they get back quickly, and hope everybody's happy and healthy.
Thank you. Yes, and I'm going to add to that as well, so congratulations to Tony and his lovely wife on baby number two. I told them I'm still waiting for the cigars, so hopefully they'll bring those back when they get back into the office. Today, March day thirty-three of the virtual EOC down on Port Street, Maryland saw three hundred and two deaths to date. Some ninety-four hundred positive individuals here in the state of Maryland have been infected by this disease. But also forty-four thousand persons have showed negative for this disease. So we should take some solace in that. Also, here in Talbot County, we're still holding at thirteen positive tests. We've been holding that number for the past week. There's nothing to jump up and down about. But when you're talking about trying to flatten that curve and trying to put into place those social distancing practices, washing your hands, covering your mouth, wearing your mask, wearing your gloves, those kind of things, and trying to basically take people into a new behavioral set, if you would. It does take time. But the numbers are showing that, at least here, I think we're starting to flatten out a bit. Thank God, we've only had one death of a person infected by COVID-nineteen. We've certainly sent our prayers and our blessings out to the family as they move forward in their, in their life. But we have to keep on with these practices. We have to keep on making sure that we are aware of our spacing. And that's why we're set up the way we are here this evening, and we will be for the near coming future, to make sure that we are projecting a good message to the citizens. Dr. Wiley spoke this morning at the business noon phone call about working with the private sector, the Walmarts, the Johnny Food, the Lowe's, and those type of big box stores that we have in our community, that are deemed essential. But to make sure that they're also incorporating into their business model the same type of health behavioral models that we want to see. Making sure that someone is at the door to monitor guests coming into the store, making sure that the carts are being right down, that the conveyor belts are being right down. I think all, if not most, stores right now have the plastic shields up. I haven't been in every store in the county, but those that I have been in, I have seen the plastic dividers between the cashier and that customer leaving the store. So she's working with those business entities to make sure that they are putting those safety plans in place. But the one thing we heard about on the call today was to make sure also that the enforcement plans are also being in place. So not just for the workforce, but also for the consumer that's inside the store. So you won't get people clustering around one particular aisle. You might want to spread them out even more. I know some stores have one-way aisles up and one-way aisles coming down. But make sure people fall in that direction, you know, turn them back around if you have to, and send them back out the aisle. So we want to see that the stores also start balancing now the safety plans that most have in place. But also now, let's start looking at enforcement just to make sure we are keeping people safe, the workers that are in the stores, and also the visitors and customers who are coming into the store. And I think that's the big next step as we, as we move forward. Again, still holding tight at thirteen. My hat goes off to Clay and his staff down at the Emergency Services Center. Geneva's doing a wonderful job down there. Dr. Wiley, if she's not there every day, she's on the phone with them every day, properly making sure that she gives us the latest information that she has around the state. So we have to remain diligent in our pursuit of safety as well. Chuck, I want to say, kudos back over to you for working with Clay, his department, and Cassandra as they try to put some safety practices in place for the construction industry. That industry is still working, they're still out in the field working and building homes and doing home repairs. But we also want to make sure they're being safe as well. They're monitoring their distance, not having four or five guys in a truck. And that's what we alluded to earlier today with Warren. We want, we want to see our roads department out there working, cutting grass, making repairs of the roadway. But we don't want to see four or five guys jammed in a truck. And I think as long as we can do so safely, and Mr. Hollis, to his credit, has made sure that those standards are being held by the department heads, as long as we can work, we want to work. And we want, but we want to do so safely. I think, thank you for helping out with those suggestions. So we're not out of the woods yet by a long, long shot. I think we've done some good work here in Talbot County. Team has been put together that are meeting on these phone calls and meeting in these subgroups, from the feeding group to the sheltering group, to the construction group. I think those groups are really doing an excellent job in making sure that, number one, people are being taken care of in their feeding operation, what happened down the other day with the Easter egg baskets were just wonderful to see, wonderful to see. The way people just came up, started working together. You know, the librarian was there handing out books. Trevor Newcom was there from your board, he's still your board chair, I believe? Your board chair was there as well, working very hard. My job was easy, but I was just handing the basket to, you know, to Frank and to Trevor. They were the ones running back and forth with Merlin, interacting with people. So again, it was just wonderful to be a part of that. But at the same time, at the same time, when you see these long lines at your feeding stations, it just shows you the magnitude of the need. And you can, you know, you can be filled up with a sense of community, pride of what's going on, of what's happening. But at the same time, when you see those lines, those long lines of cars, you saw Frank, the way people just lined up down Mecklenburg Avenue and going around the corner, you know, the need is still there and still very great. So thanks to everyone out there who was working hard. very great. So thanks to everyone out there who was working hard. Thanks to our first responders. Thanks to our teachers. And thanks very much to our nurses and our doctors. Let's not forget them on, on the front, other frontline in this epidemic. We want to certainly send our thoughts and prayers out to them and make sure that they are being safe as they, uh, keep us safe. So with that being said, I will end on just a couple quick comments back to the public. Again, anyone wishing to give comment to the budget can do so in writing. We will certainly ask that you do that in writing. We want to send that to publiccomment@talbotcountymaryland.gov. We would like to have those comments in no later than Monday, May the 4th. The budget is on the county website. Ms. Lane gave that address to you earlier. You can always contact the county manager's office for that information. But we do encourage people to go onto the county website, go through the county budget as well as her presentation that she gave tonight. It is also, it will be there if not there already, for persons to look through and draft their comments and send them over to us for our consideration.
Mr. Pack?
Yes?
On the weather dress, it's Talbot County MD.
It is MD?
You said Talbot County, you're wrong. I just.
Oh, just MD, okay.
It's just Talbot County MD.
Just the MD, not the Maryland. Okay. So, let me, let me say that again. Publiccomment@talbotcountymd.gov, not the Maryland. So with that being said, the county council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, May the 28th. It will begin at 6:00 PM. It will be held back here at the Wyom Run at the Community Center. The council will be convening an open session at 4:30 and immediately adjourned as a closed session to discuss real estate, legal, and personal matters listed on the statement for closing that meeting. Therefore, council, if there's no further business of the council, we have come to the end of our agenda. We are adjourned.
So Mr. Pack, you've actually been able to leave?
What did I say?
Yeah. Unless that's your, your.
April the 20th, I think, correct. Thank you. We are adjourned. Thank you.